Ministers update.
Nope.
Ministers update.
No, call to order.
Oh, roll call. I am sorry.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am, sorry about that. Okay, ministers updates are non fiscal offices updates, there's then swearing in ceremony.
Actually, I do have a few things to add.
Now you do.
Yes. On behalf of the police department, they are submitting for a grant that the trustees approved the application for the last meeting. However, a document to submit with the application is a letter from all elected officials stating that you are in support of the application. So if each of you could sign that letter and just to let you know, I will be celebrating my June change holiday tomorrow. That's on the night.
Fiscal officers?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you for asking.
All right, now the swearing in ceremony, police chief.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, it's like what? I was saying, I don't try to say no one to do this council, but I'm listening for that one, look at the next one. Storm, telling me nonstop, he got out of the academy and I got here first in September when we've been hiring and training new people. And so I started doing background checks on him and he came. One, he's skinny like me. So I was like, I gotta have him in the whole group. He's a little bit taller, but that's okay. I got him for LP. But his academy commander gave him great reviews. Really wanted somebody to pick him up. I talked to his work. His work said he's one of the hardest workers that he had. And then a couple of times when I called, we had to have an earpiece in because he's a driver and I heard him talking to people that were coming up to him and he was always, yes, sir, yes, ma'am, no, ma'am, yes, whatever I can do for you. And didn't really even pay attention that I was still on the phone. Like that's the kind of service and the respect that I want our officers doing back here with our staff. So welcome aboard. President Young is going to do your swearing in. You get lost with your name, I'll prompt you, don't worry.
Raise your right hand, young man.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Tom Storm, but I'm sorry, back. Do you formally swear?
Do you formally swear?
To uphold the constitution and laws in the United States of America.
To uphold the constitution and laws in the United States of America.
The laws and constitution of state of Ohio.
The laws and constitution of state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of Ross Township, Ohio.
The laws and ordinance.
And I will discharge, I'm sorry, I will discharge the duties of the office, police officer to which I have been appointed.
And I will discharge the office, police officer that which I have been.
To the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We had to have you onboard.
Uh, trustees, you guys want to come up? Lori, everybody come up, we'll do a picture here. Here's your official one.
You guys can get between the flags. That would be great.
You can go on the center of the flag.
Get between the flags. Cover up, cover up.
Somebody give me a cheer real quick.
Quit talking. I'm good. Thank you.
Did we got it?
I got that part. Now we can do.
Family come on up?
Yeah, who's gonna pin him up?
Yep, somebody, Lori, get your family picture real quick and then somebody, I mean, spin it.
Oh, come on. Who also put the gun.
I will absolutely take a picture for you and then we'll post.
Look at that short moment.
I don't feel you all stand between the flags. Look pretty.
Got it.
Awesome.
Go ahead, sir, you can put it on. We have fire department.
Your best, young man.
Thank you.
To be proud, we had to be proud.
Thank you, thank you.
Everybody, don't be speech.
Oh, thank you. And so good about looking at your beverages.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Glad to have you onboard, sir.
We're so happy to have you.
All right. I'm sorry. All right, expedited legislation. Purpose, to change the date of July third, third, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting to July the second, two thousand twenty-five, due to the Fourth of July weekend. Move for the adoption motion number twenty-five dash zero six nine, change the date of the July regular meeting to Wednesday, June, July the second, instead of the regular meeting scheduled date of July the third. Second.
Second.
Discussion. We'll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Discussion item, fire department topics.
Good evening, I got a couple items for tonight's meeting. In front of you, I have a proposed policy. Minimum staffing levels. Ross, just like everybody else in Butler County is facing staffing shortages. We only have so many full-time personnel that can fill those spots. And it's, our overtime budgets, big through the roof by the end of the year. So my proposal is to, to maintain our minimum staffing levels, which is three personnel on shift. Allow a part-time member to pick up. Called minimum manings at an extra five dollars per hour on top of their hourly rate. Morgan Township does this and they've had great success with it. Nobody abuses the system out there. I think it would be very difficult to try to abuse the system and. Call off or wait for minimum manning to, to work.
So I gotta ask you a question.
Sure.
Are we having a couple of people not showing up on the presentation yet?
It's not that. With ninety percent of our personnel are full-time at other places. So when they get mandated or overtime to their full-time jobs, that obviously takes precedence. We rarely have people call off if they do this legitimate reason. But it, it's good. We have that many. Experienced people, but it's also bad because their, their loyalty is with their rear department, which is paying into the pension. And I understand that completely.
So let me ask you a question. I'm used to the days of volunteers when you have twenty or thirty guys show up for a fire. So we have a selected number of people that can take out and go. If we have a really hardworking fire, do we have guys that would show, people, I should say, because a good one too, showing up even though they're not on duty to help out?
Usually me and Captain Embry. There's not many of us that live in the township. Most everybody lives elsewhere outside of Ross. But that's why we have the mutual aid agreements in place. So when we do get dispatched for a structured fire, we already have multiple departments and engine companies come to assist us. So fortunately, the, the days of the volunteers are just way past us. And I wish we had more personnel that lived in, in the township and were able to come and help out. When they're available, they do.
Mr. Young's point, in a, in a major situation, is that then mutual aid that just comes and helps?
Yes.
Because?
Yes.
Which is, which is a good thing to have, but then it puts their department in a bind in case something pops up.
But it's also reciprocal that, you know, we go to them when they have a large incident.
Like you did at Harrison, uh, last week or?
Right. And last night, uh, when the storm came through, we had thirteen calls out of that. And a lot of those, we were going to Hanover Township because they were getting hammered with calls. I think we did three or four runs into Hanover Township within half an hour.
On a major situation, which hopefully doesn't happen out here.
Right.
There's not really a. Some concern that Hanover and Oxford, Corrine and whoever wouldn't fail to show up.
Right.
But we still want to use our own people.
Right. But that, this is my proposal, trying to cut down all overtime spending. There's obviously some exceptions in here. It was not eligible to collect this minimum manning pay. And that's outlined there. They're not meeting their, their required hours for, if they're PRN employee, if they're on lead or if they're on disciplinary probation or suspension, they cannot get these. This bonus. Money, so to speak.
Is this consistent with what other, I know you said Morgan, is this consistent with?
Almost mirrors Morgan Township policy.
Okay.
With the exception of the, the rate, theirs is a little bit higher than.
How does that work within your budget?
It would be a lot cheaper than paying overtime.
Okay.
Like this Saturday is a good example. I only have two personnel on Saturday. So somebody's probably going to be getting. Then on day and last week, it's the weekends, it's summer, everybody's out of town. It's, and every summer we go through this, but this year seems like it's been a lot worse than as a previous year.
It appears as though the board is in favor of this particular policy. Historically, the board has not approved policies within the fire department or the police department's Lexapro policies. However, since this includes a, an additional pay rate, the board should approve it. So my recommendation is just to include reference to this within the personnel policy for the entire township under the benefits and compensation section, referencing that the bulk of the actual policy, how it's administered, will remain under, not remain, but will be. Under the fire department's Lexapro policy. So at the next trustee's meeting. Will have approval, but it mainly will be. Around the dollar amount of this minimum.
Will it be retroactive to the beginning of?
No, it will be. When it is effect, when it is officially adopted.
Because I'm thinking if that. Just trying to think if, if that falls within. What, what the next payroll period?
Oh, you advise to be effective next payroll?
Yeah, I mean, if we're, if it's July, the July second in that particular pay, if that payroll started on the Sunday prior to, it would be nice. I mean, I could look at the calendar and we could amend that, but that would be my recommendation.
Believe their. Morgan Township fiscal officer uses UAN and I believe there's a pay code in there for something similar to this.
I'll have to ask because I was, I was just going to set up something, but if there's already one that will take the hourly rate and add the amount of money to it.
Just like a bonus.
Okay.
Chief Griffith, Morgan Township, I talked about it.
Okay.
He believes that's, that's the case out there.
I'll give them a jingle and, and ask them what, how they're doing it. But even if I have to manually do it, it's just, if, if we change the amounts every year, it's just one more pay code to change. It's not a big deal.
That will be something when I submit payroll that I probably have to submit to UHABs. These personnel have been demanding these days and hours.
Yeah, we'll have to have them.
We can mark it on our, our scheduling system, minimum manning. So when I do payroll, I know.
Which hours are, you know, if, if they worked a twelve-hour shift, if the entire twelve hours is subject to minimum manning, it needs to say that. But if only eight hours of the twelve hours, whatever.
Right.
We'll just need a.
Yeah, we'll, we'll sit down.
We'll figure it out. I'm not worried about that.
The other. Item on here is the water rescue incident from Harrison last week. I know I sent the board a message after it occurred, just in the event that it did make the news, but. A brief overview, we were requested by Harrison, a water rescue on the Whitewater River. They had four to five victims that were stuck on a downed tree in the river. They'd been rafting.
Under choke and take them under.
Well, they, they got caught on the branches and it busted their raft and they were, they were on top of the tree waiting to get. Pucked out of the water. They weren't in the water. They were on top. So at that time, we got there, they were safe, in my opinion. They weren't in the water. But we responded with Corrine and Harrison with their boats, like, as all, we're on their run card for Southwest Hamilton County water incidents. They deployed our boat. Upstream from the incident. Went down, went downstream, met up with Harrison's boat as Corrine's boat approached from downstream. We were requested to reposition with Corrine's boat and help them get the victims into the boats and get them to shore. As they were doing that, it appears the weight in the boat shifted. The rear of the boat started filling with water and they capsized, throwing both of our personnel into the water. Firefighter Gabbert, who's. We just hired him a year ago, so he's, he's new. He's still green. He got swept under both boats and came up the other side, grabbed the branch and they, they pulled him out. Lieutenant Houston was. Under our boat with the, the water, basically trying to push him down. So his head was underwater for about ten seconds until they were able to get his head above water. And finally able to get him out of the water and. Crosby Township transported him to university just for evaluation. He was released that night. And he's, he's home now, working through some things, just. After going through that reveal, but that's the brief synopsis of what, what occurred.
If he had his boots on, that was filled with water, that keeping some shedding.
He had his boots on, his duty boots, not his fire boots. Yeah, they had the shoes on, but it, the current did, it ripped his pants off. Hell, his boots stayed on, I don't know. His boots were still on. He came out of the water, but his pants weren't. But it was, I think it's the closest. Here on this that we've had as a department. Very easily could have been two fatalities that incident. And. We, we reviewed it internally and there, there's some other discuss about this incident.
Were the rest of the people okay?
Yes, they, they got everybody out safely, so.
And. The, the one firefighter was on scene with the incident that happened in Morgan?
Yes, we all, we all were. But. I did not have, all I did in that scenario was help land helicopter. Firefighter Gabbert, just a crew member on the engine. Other, other call, other than, he was there. Didn't do anything. As soon as they didn't do anything, he, he wasn't needed to do anything. He didn't, he didn't do anything.
Well, we're glad that the, first and foremost, that everybody's safe and still breathing. But what effect did that have on your equipment and its availability and usage?
Our, our boat, technically our boat's still out of service. It, it'll run, but we lost a lot of equipment that was in that boat that sent down the river, including two, two radios, two of our new price suits that we just bought. Some rope, throw bags, rescue slings, some hand tool. Our boat was taken to Corrine where their fleet maintenance basically took the motor apart because it was submerged for an hour or so. They took it apart, essentially ran four, four or five oil changes through to get all the water out of the system. And it's, it's back to running, but we don't have all the equipment on.
Is there ways to store the equipment in that boat where it's, I'll use the term secure?
Not really.
And still make it usable?
Yeah. And, I mean, we store the equipment on the trailer. There's a, a, like a tote that's secured to that trailer. We keep all the stuff in. So when they get there, whatever they need, they'll, they'll put it in there. Typically, it's not a whole lot. Nothing big.
How often is training done for water rescue? Is that a county thing or a departmental thing, regional?
Yes, both.
Oh, okay.
I know Ron Stangers, he's on the water rescue committee for Hamilton County.
Yeah.
We, we try to do something water related once a year. It doesn't always happen.
Yeah.
Whether ice rescue, when they're water rescue, summer and fall, we'll do that down the Hudson City. But on the river, that's a different scenario. It's moving water, a swimming water. That's a specialized training. Boat tech or, or water rescue tech is a forty-hour class. And they, the, the first part of that class is a swim test. They have to, and it's a pretty rigorous swim test.
With clothes and gear?
I think it's with just their swim trunks.
Okay.
I believe. But it's still, it's hard. So if they don't pass that swim test on first day, they're out of class. They, they can't, they can't finish it. And it's recommended that they do another eight hours of training annually for that water rescue tech.
Either of the people in that situation, water rescue tech people? They were, they were on duty at the time.
Yes.
Therefore deployed.
Yes. And we, like I said, we're on the run card in Hamilton County. And it is our policy, we'll, we'll take them to boat, but if we don't have certified people, here, here's our boat. What do you need from us?
Right.
Because there's still a lot of shore-based tasks that they can help with without being in that one.
Need more training.
They coming to pick you up?
It's their fire and ice cream night.
All that.
We had to move it from last night because of the storm.
Okay. Is that what you? Are we gonna talk about that later?
Yeah, talk about that.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
That it, young man?
Okay.
That it?
Yes, sir. Unless you have other, other questions about this.
And it's mixed use overlay. Any, any discussion on what we're doing here yet? Topic to talk about?
In, in, in theory, I think it's the first thing to do. Ask a question. Or is that something you want to do in this term?
I'm guessing my big concern here is, I, I don't know at what portion or what are, what are we going to adopt? Is, is that what we're going to work on? Because my, my concern is here, I, I don't want. Want the present homeowners to be. Hit in a negative manner that we adopt something and they either upon sale of the property or if they stay in the property, that it's going to cost them to come up, to meet the standards of what we possibly vote on or work out in the next few weeks, next few months. I'm high along with, like, drove, driven by and there's, there's. It's very mixed up. All the houses are not the same. There's two stories. There's single ranches, single ranches that are probably twenty years newer across the street at the two-story. I won't mention any names, but we have a, a lady that is recently widowed. And I think there was a home that headed in the right, right direction and maybe if she uses a different last name, but I think in historical society, it's still Alicia Fernbach, am I correct? She, she was rehabbing a home down there, redid the yard, some. Some lining along the sidewalk and I think things just came to a halt. I don't know a reason why. I don't think anybody does, but that, that has, that was the one progressing that I, I thought may give us an idea of what coming forth would look like. But that, I don't, I haven't seen much movement there in the last two years. Though I'd like to see it, but I guess that's, that's my, my, my. What I need to know is. People that are presently there, is this going to cost them? If we adopt something and board of zoning allows it for this, again, this was taken care of over a decade ago. By a completely different board. But, and I, and I understand, we don't want another, basically pull barn, looking at two buildings for Keller General or whatever the other one is called. That, that we want to make sure does not happen in the future, but I, I don't want it to hurt our residents.
I agree, I agree with that too. Don't. Would it be fair to say that? Like. The grandfather, what they have in. Grandfather, that in, and that changes that are made forward?
Yes.
Subject to this?
Yes.
Is that?
I, I think that's fair to say where I'm, where I'm coming from.
See it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I, I think there's a, a few of the, the newer ranches, they wouldn't, they're already brick.
Yep.
With some at the peak, some vinyl siding, base up. But I, I don't see where that in the future would be part of a, a walking district. They're too new, not historical, like the west side of the road with the big white. Topboard, topboard houses. So I think we're looking at two different time eras in, in architecture.
Fifties and thirties and fifties and eighteen hundreds.
Right, yes. So yeah, that's just my two cents and I'm, I'm ready to roll and hear what everybody else has to say or what ideas and, and, and how this is going to progress. You know, we come up with what we, we think. Public information at a certain point, hopefully. If, if the resident, now that this were, if all the opportunity comes speak, either a negative yes or. Search and search for it in there. And, you know, I am right thinking that no matter what is decided in this building, it goes to the Butler County Board of Zoning for approval?
I think, I think not, not placing any kind of a burden on the people who are here.
Yeah.
Is, is a.
But if you sell, it would be upon the purchaser.
Right.
To come up to with whatever is decided.
Right.
Here of what, you know, maybe three foot up, a, a stone wall, then the, then the vinyl siding or certain types of shrubbery. I don't, I don't know. I don't know what. What this allows us to ask for.
Would it be fair to say that if you're a dwelling, a primary residence dwelling and you sell to another person who's keeping it a primary residence dwelling, there are no changes required of you, but if you sell with the intent of putting in a business or knocking it down and allowing some, yeah, or you're changing it from a single family dwelling to anything other than?
Right. I, I would not want to run off of, of a possible purchaser from somebody.
Right.
That would, that would hurt our present resident.
Right.
And, and a manner, but yes, if they would go to make it some kind of a business bed and breakfast.
An Airbnb.
Correct. Put it in that nature.
Okay.
Or to sell it, knock it down and put in a, put in a family dollar.
Yes, if you would go ahead and level the building that you could not come up with steel frame and pull barn site. Frickin' morgue.
What do you think about that, Dave?
Well, I'd like, you know, the one side, uh, I said, it's all the old old building. I'd like to see if we can keep them.
Yeah.
As they are. The other side are buildings from the thirties, twenties and thirties and a couple in the sixties.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which is, is not historical whatsoever, but they're still residents. So it, it, it's kind of a touchy situation. What are you, what are you gonna do when you're involving people's lives and they live? And wondering where, you know, what could these really be? It, I would not like to see a lot of things torn down and like, he didn't say, his, his building is being put up like he had been. It takes away from the. But I think they have to look into those deeper.
I think that's what we're talking about. Third Dollar General or a third.
And we don't need it.
Dollar Family or whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
That doesn't mean somebody might not try to jam one in.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'd like to sit down with Greg and then again, to see what their ideas were, what we could go after and see if it's a feasible thing. Actually, we're willing to, to, to residents themselves.
Did, uh, did anybody have the opportunity to speak with Stephenson a while to see what they plan and cover that little parcel?
I have not. That was, I have to talk to Cindy. Cindy, Cindy talked to somebody.
Go ahead.
And, uh, frankly, I forget what she said. I could probably text her. I don't think, I don't think they're eager to sell. Conversation's kinda coming to, to me. But that doesn't mean that, you know, make, um, I, I, I think it might be the kind of thing where they don't wanna be like something like that, which is not, which is not our point.
Yes.
Our point is, do you want to work with the township to maybe do something with that?
You've, you've not done anything in, in four years.
Yeah.
It's, off station's been gone a long time.
Yeah.
Or was it a car? It was golf, wasn't it?
I could see the type of stuff like this.
Anybody else love kid here?
Lady put down there and then the sidewalk put down there.
It was golf.
A little park maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, it all makes sense, but.
I think there's enough conversation to say.
Make it right now as one of the next, uh, IBA.
We, we don't want it to be a burden on, on anybody.
Right.
Great, great point. And, um, but we still wanna try to maybe protect the integrity of the downtown area as it is. Without it just being, I don't wanna say dumped up, but you know what I mean? What do you think, you guys? It's not public participation, but what the heck? Yeah, sure.
What are the overlay issues is that county zoning? Is, is that, if you change from a potential cars. Hitting, but the, it says presidential or residential, it's a big deal. Presidential, so then you've got another that, that exists now even without the overlay. This was many there, even though, I think in sixties, nineties, presidential, I mean, uh, house, this is, this is house business, some years. How many? That's what amazed me of a color general, color, the house taken down was publicly, there was property. This the owner.
I, I think that, that, the way I understand it, the overlay district will put another hurdle in front of people if they wanna change it, because the county, the way I understand it with Mr. Fair and whoever else is, the county, um, will give strong consideration to an overlay district that's put in place by a township before they allow, before they even consider zoning changes. So. Yeah.
Of course, essentially it's kept, house is a house, but it's now a business. Ancient state, big. Fire factory taking a house, create an office with it. It has a, affected the city code. Like house with the process from, that may in turn special business.
That's how Steve Flower was running too.
Yes, that was what I was speaking about.
Oh, oh.
When they started to rehab.
The proposed boundary.
Cool to the right.
It's, if, if you wanna see it, you know, maybe, maybe later, but, um, there's, it's here. This is, this is one twenty-six in Layhi, right over here. Or I'm sorry, down there and it goes up the school road.
So can we?
And then there's a little bit that goes up.
Yeah, like certain crap in that has to be torn down and replaced with something else. Can we, you know, break it up like that? So we're, that side, they could tear down, but it had to be a certain development criteria. But this side over here, we don't wanna lose our old buildings. Like, can we break it down like that? Segregated?
I don't know that you could dictate that anyway.
I don't think that the overlay, a lot, yeah, would allow us to say you couldn't tear it down.
Right, because you could, you could tear down a house and build a brand new one and it's still a residential home.
It would have to be within.
But then it would have to meet space.
If it, if, if
So much.
If the overlay's tight enough, then it has to be done within the
Could use it.
Car area that's.
But if the house is converted to a hair salon and they wanna put a neon sign out front, it might be restricted, the, the signage could be restricted. They would have to comply with a certain type of signage.
Yeah, I think the coffee shop that's down here, Shepherd, Shepherd, I think it's called. I think they do a pretty good job of keeping it residential, but while operating a business there.
Right.
It's not ugly or anything. It, um, it does include that area that goes back into, uh, where Meadowbrook currently is. So it's down, down the street, but it does include that all the way back to the back there. Yes.
You go down to U D S.
I like the concept of the idea.
It does go past, uh, or it includes a little bit on Layhi. It barely goes past that.
Boundaries can be whatever the board wants it to be.
The, the way that this is, it's just a hair past that on the picture. You're welcome to, welcome to look at it.
I would like to reiterate too, I, uh, supplied the board with copies of this email several times. And I was hoping that these issues might be asked, uh, David Fair when he was present. But, um, back when the land use plan was being updated as part of the zoning resolution that was on the ballot, when that whole process was finished, I was asked by the board to reach out to the consultant Wendy Muller that had assisted with that process about addressing the Venice overlay district and the confines of the new Butler County Rural Zoning Resolutions. District, which was new to the Butler County Rural Zoning Resolution. And she listed four items that brought her concern. One, the resolution does not allow for the township to initiate a request to have an area zoned for the M U O. Only property owners, the county commission or the county zoning commission. That means the only way to proceed is to convince the county to initiate the zone change on your behalf. In theory, it looks like only one landowner could initiate, but that may be a challenge because people generally don't like other property owners changing zoning on their behalf. And I think it would be difficult to get all of the property owners to sign an application. Next, section eleven point oh two of the M U O states that the underlying base zoning districts control the permitted and conditional uses. That is problematic for what the township is trying to achieve, which would allow for commercial uses across the M U O, regardless if there was a residential zoning district. Currently written, there doesn't seem to be an exception to have the M U O alter what uses are allowed. In my opinion, that means that you would have to rezone the entire Venice area to be a commercial district. Unfortunately, there is no commercial district in the Butler County zoning resolution that allows for standalone residential dwellings, so all of the homes that currently exist in the district would be non-conforming and that is not ideal. The Butler County zoning resolution does allow for residential dwellings as a conditional use, but only when they are quote, part of a principal building unquote, which I would interpret to mean a mixed use building with residential and commercial uses. The only other fix is to request that the county amend their M U O regulations in section eleven oh two to allow the M U O plan to alter what uses may be allowed or prohibited in any given M U O application, instead of keeping strict to the underlying zoning districts. Uh, number three, you're going to have to develop more intense maps and narratives for the quote, design plan that is required under eleven oh four beyond what we have in the Venice overlay district language and zoning boundary. Number four, eleven oh five sounds tricky too, because it seems that if the property owners apply, they develop the plan, but they could use a consultant. Otherwise, the county or quote, independent consultant unquote, has to prepare the plan. I am not sure if that means an independent consultant hired by the county if the county makes the application. So it seems as though there are yeah, you know, or residential versus commercial zoning, uh, issues that come into play here.
So, do we have a copy of what you got there?
I've given you a copy multiple times, like another one.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
No, there's not one before you tonight, but I've given it to you.
The, um, let's just take Brent's, the young funeral, funeral home. Nothing, nothing wrong with the way that it looks. Me at all. I mean, they keep it looking great. I think, I think what we're trying to stop or control is kind of what happened down, down, down there. I'm not against there being business that looks like that or business that looks like that coffee shop. Um, if, i- if we can do it in a way that says anything that gets changed has to look like this, then, then that's a good thing. Um, is this something that, would this be the first thing you think we should talk about with Mr. Fair? Or has he?
I was hoping they would have been covered when he was there.
Okay.
But yes, I think that these are obstacles that
Okay.
a consultant has identified that.
Is, is there any reason not to forward this email to Mr. Fair and see what his thoughts are about that?
You know, I sent it to him in preparation of him coming, cause I thought he might address these issues. He did not either.
Okay.
So, and the way Wendy's writing is, we could, we could come up with a great plan and the homeowners down there could all get together and go to, go to the Butler County Board of, um, zoning and contest it and then not go through anyhow, no matter how much legwork is done.
Well, it sounds like, first of all, the township can't initiate the plan.
Yes, yeah, we can't do anything without working through the, uh, Butler County zoning person, getting their approval to move forward.
That's correct.
Sounds like a break that's been put on this.
Okay.
Yes, it has to come from a property owner, the commissioners or county zoning commission.
Has to be originated from that.
Yes.
The, the request.
The resolution does not allow for the township to initiate a request to have an area zoned for the mixed use overlay. That means the only way to proceed is to convince the county to initiate the zone change on the township's behalf.
Which would call, which the county, if the county did it, they would call it a mixed use overlay.
I don't think it would go past the county commission.
How do other communities get them done?
Well, this is the very first time it's ever been. I don't know that Butler County has.
I thought they said there was one in Westchester.
Westchester has its own zoning.
That's correct. Okay, that's, that's it.
I don't know that there has ever been an overlay used within the confines of the Butler County Rural Zoning Resolution.
Probably something that they're not real anxious. It's their.
Now, I was told, I don't remember who told me that this was put in, it's Venice at mind. So.
Oh, maybe they are.
You know, maybe they would be willing to work with us through, uh, you know, make this a learning curve, a beta test, whatever you wanna call it, and maybe they'd be willing to make some changes. But these are items that Wendy Muller, a consultant, has identified as.
Potentially problematic.
Yes.
So if we draft, draft a letter, letter with our ideas of a mixed use overlay, who would it go to first, zoning or the, or the commissioners?
Um, I guess you, either whoever you want.
Probably.
Either one of them have to.
I think that would be steps one, is, is draft the letter and tell more of our concerns with the last two, um, businesses that were built, that they're, they're not up to what most township residents even felt was a quality standard. And they're, they're just steel buildings with a little bit of rock in front.
My guess is they would think.
We tried that and it didn't work out.
Well. Right.
And they weren't, I don't, they're much in favor of it either, but yeah, I, I, I think that's the way we find out if they'll shoot us down, like, okay, we'll, we'll talk about it. Meet with you, come up with some more ideas of what you feel a new building should look like.
The people who it affects directly the most, people that live on either side of it, the people who live right across the street from it. Do they want to see another concrete monstrosity built or not? And that, at that point, maybe one of them's initiating.
With the, with the sidewalk to nowhere?
Right, with the sidewalk to nowhere.
So would we
So.
get the, um, addresses of all the residents from there and draft the letter and send them questionnaire to send back to us?
Yeah. I would say, why not? What do you think? Ask the people, well, you know, the, the people who, who live here, I, you know, it, it's, it's not meant as a way to control their houses. It's some, it's a, to me, it's something that's meant to have some influence over what can go there.
Right, so maybe let's just ask if we can get the people who live on that, on the streets here, to come to one of our meetings and address it with us.
I would recommend first the board formally make bullet point lists of what you're trying to achieve.
Okay.
Go to them with an organized idea of why, why you want to implement this.
I can come up, I can come up with a letter. Do you guys wanna shoot off and? I can come up, I can come up with a letter. Do you guys want to shoot off some bullet points and then look at the letter and say, yeah, we want to send this or?
Sounds like a start.
It gives a start. People shoot it dead right off the bat and.
Well, yeah, and we don't want to waste time and money doing it.
Yeah, it affects them more than it affects us.
I, I didn't hear that, but everybody's giggling.
That we could tell them that we've heard a third Dollar Store is getting ready to come.
There's always Dollar Tree.
Exactly.
How about, let's say our, our, our concern, our concern for. Uh, future.
Without our own zoning.
Development.
Having to rely on the county. Overlays are.
There's a man in the audience. Just remember the first. Main Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, Main Street looks beautiful in Hamilton. But that's a city.
Well, what, what Mr. Fair was talking about, I think you were here that night, um, there was a, a CBS done over Montgomery. That he said looks very, very nice. And I, I don't know all of the construction terminology. But, you know, I guess there was flower pots and brick and, you know, nice windows and it was, it was done nicely. So that it fit in with old Montgomery. And, you know, something like that, okay, you know.
But Montgomery looks like Montgomery everywhere. On the main streets, they all have that red English brick. And it's every, and, and that was started by the, uh, Emery, Emery family and the Moore family. They established that back in the nineteen twenties.
Clearly, they have zoning standards that are required. I mean, you can go to Marymont too and drive through and. There's a, a Walgreens and a CVS, but they don't look like a normal. There are.
Our, our concern for future development and aesthetic, aesthetic look. Of whatever's being put there. Is that a fair thing to say? Yes, okay.
Correct.
In the property values. That's good. Especially their property values. On plan, that could be a property values. Those you're. Now for. Um. I think property values doesn't necessarily eliminate. Property value and I think that is a.
And along with that point is. Where, where we kind of started was grandfathering in or probably a better term for that, but grandfathering in. Everything that's there so that not, you're not being forced to make changes. And if you sell your house and sell your residential. Someone else, they're not for them or.
Correct.
Ha- having to make any kind of changes only, only if there's a new building or.
A change in use.
A change to a business.
Well, it's change in use. If you're changing it from a residential to a mixed-use or. Commercial, I mean, it's change of use. Because my prior position, people would be upset because they're saying, well, I. I live, my house is in a commercial area and it's zoned. I'm like, how it's zoned and what the primary use are two different things. It can be, you can have a residential property in the middle of a commercial zoning. It happens all the time. But what you are using it for is how it gets taxed. So if you're living in it, dwelling in it. You're only living and the, and you're not running a business out of it, it is a residential property. Even though it's smack dab, and we've all seen it on. Sixty-three, you see the one lone house in the middle of the industrial area. As long as it remains a residential property, it's residential. Doesn't matter how it's owned. That's, that's a different issue for a different day. So, primary uses, as long as the primary use doesn't change. They won't be required to. But what if it's a single family, it's a ranch and they're gonna convert it to a two-story? Now the use is changing because it went from. And, and what, and they, they want to make it a, a pole building, you know what I mean? They want to add on a pole building to the back and make that. You've seen the, I mean, that, there's some trickiness in there. As long as the primary use is not changing. Or if you sell to someone with the same use, no changes. It's only when the usage changes. They need someone to have the. Language on that.
I can come up with a letter and, and probably break it five or six times and then. Give it to you guys and see what you think and then we'll fix it some more. I mean, that, that's easy enough. And do that. And then, uh, maybe it would be a good idea to send that letter to Mr. Fair. Or, or let him know that we've already sent it to him once. What do you think about? Point A because, or that first point, because that's a big.
How restrictive is this?
That's a big, number one's a big one. So that'll kind of get us, that'll kind of get the ball rolling. And if it doesn't get past what Mr. Fair says. And if we come up with this letter and everybody says no, or heck no, or something else, then, okay, we're done. At which point we say, okay, when they, when they do come back with another one of those buildings in there.
A good idea.
We have no, we have no. Have no control or, or say in it. And that's not.
Not a complaint.
That's not a threat. That's something that has happened clearly. So.
All right.
All right.
Administration, building carpeting. Samples are in front of us. So are we here to pick out which, when we want and then go with it?
Yes, keeping in mind, uh, those of us with offices who've decided, we don't want to go through the hassle of new carpeting. So, uh, the carpeting that is picked when office doors are open. This current carpeting will be visible. So it needs to be carpeting that doesn't look absolutely horrible, butted up against the current carpeting.
And we have butted those up against.
We have.
And none of them are.
Those are transitional strip? That would be.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a question. Has, I, I hear on seven hundred all the time how great Zero Res is. Uh, getting stuff out. Have they been called?
Well, it's not even, it's, it's faded.
There's a pretty significant oil stain over there too, that I don't think Zero Res.
We can certainly try to clean it.
Our cleaning person, um, did bring her carpet cleaner in and took pictures of the water. Because she said, I know you're not going to think I did, I did this and did it like three different times and sent us pictures of the black water that she pulled out of this carpet. I think it's as, as clean as, as anyone is ever going to get it. Um.
There's a really bad spot over by the table. Cause it trucked the car. That's the oil stain.
Well, and then the sun. There's a lot of sun damage in that.
And even the natural walkway from that door back to the police station is, uh, fairly worn and discolored. The board approved twenty thousand dollars to replace the carpet for this year.
Let me throw out an idea. Rather than taking down everything and putting it in there, do we. A good carpet layer can cut and make it wavy, give it a little design, not a straight cut, go around that and go back here and make it like an island?
No.
And just replace that?
Well, we're not saying our offices. It would just be this primary area here all the way down. The hallways, I mean.
Whoever professional the board wants this area.
Yeah. It, and it's going to be done with tiles, the cubes. Because that will be easier. It's not going to be rolls, except for maybe where the stairs are that they know how to do.
So this is wood here, but that's concrete over there, right?
Yeah, I believe that's all concrete there.
I'll be set. How about having somebody that's familiar, if you like to be on a watch. Finish it.
I think that's been brought up and worried about the echo.
Yeah.
I understand. I guess.
We talked about. Yeah, it, it would be cold in the winter and be hot in the summer. I mean, and already it's. Lori and I have already just talked about this room. I mean, there's only so much lipstick you could put on a pig. It's going to be what it's going to be, but it would be nice to make this room just look a little bit nicer.
You ladies work here every day. You deal with it every day. We don't. So tell us what you want.
We kind of.
And we'll just go with that.
We kind of, we already have a preference, but.
Okay, what is it?
We like all three of those. There's one that we like more than the other.
Make it a design. Once you're three, go the other way.
We were just curious what you guys were all.
No, no, you, you guys live with it. We don't.
The funny thing is everybody who's here, everybody's on here on a daily basis has all picked the same tile. We're just curious what you all say because it's fine and it is what it is.
Number three on the right.
No, I'm, I'm a two. Three's too, too dark. Um, number one, a little too much brown. So yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a, I'm a two.
Two or two? Ever new?
Did, we already approved money for this?
Yeah.
Yes.
And this is going to be significantly, significantly less because we're not doing the.
How many square feet is this, this area that you're, that we're talking about doing?
Uh, and it's this area and.
The hallways.
A common area.
Does it?
Yes.
It doesn't really break it down, does it? By square footage? There's two quotes.
I go with one of the centers as well. Two, where do you add?
Heck, like you said, I'm not here my day through Friday.
Neither am I.
I guess.
The irony is Lori found, um, picture online of one of them and they, it's that third one. And they have the same color chairs against, it's very funny. Of all, of all the. Samples that she looked at, she did find an example.
Same with mass chairs.
Um, actually, they're not horrible with it. I mean, there's enough color. It's amazing what colors are in there once you really start looking at them. None of them look bad. That, those, um, AI versions of our. Are with that particular carpet. If you look at the photos. That's an AI version. Now, we keep the blinds closed mostly now, all the time, which will cut down on a good deal of that. It does help with the climate control to keep the shades down.
We all be in agreeance, no more static displays inside the.
No more what?
No, no more static displays. No police cruisers.
It has been nice.
Antique, it's going to leak oil.
It's been nice having a conference space. I mean. It's, it's nice.
How much, how much does McSwain want?
Um, they're down to eighty-nine hundred.
They're the two. The left. J P flooring is the. Third one.
Is the darker one.
Yes, moved to.
Figures.
If you really want to know what I think in spite of Governor Palin's. Preference to putting lipstick on a pig. I would ask Zero Res what, how, how, how confident are they being able to do that? If it doesn't work, are they willing to say, are they willing to guarantee that they can make it and fix it?
Can you really make this look better?
I don't know.
I, I mean, it's.
Who's the carpet cleaner? Is it?
It's a Chris, our lady who cleans our building.
I just wonder how good these, when I say professional, not that she's not a professional.
No, I mean, she probably has a machine and it's.
Stanley steamer and, and. Zero Res does.
They can't get it out. And there are days when you walk in here, it still smells like an oil change. I think sometimes the gas in the oil has just kind of seeped. And I don't know if it's in the concrete. I don't know if getting new con, uh, carpet is going to help if it's just in the building. I don't know. But the, with the patterns, it would at least. Be interesting. Look, I don't know.
Where's the money coming from, from this? The general fund?
Yeah. And like I said, we.
You sound like a bunch of women can't make up their mind what we're going to work with. So let's do something.
Well.
Well, we've already decided our furniture in our office will, neither Lori or I will probably stand being taken apart and rebuilt. It's already together with tape and bubble gum. So we don't want to add to the expense of having to now replace office furniture. So it's fine. If we could just get the, the primary areas out here, I kind of feel like it.
So which one we need to handle?
Well.
Behind the door number one, behind the door number.
If we're going with McSwain, then it's the, it's the two on the left.
I don't like the one on the right. It's too dark.
All right, let's go for the one in the center then.
I like, I like going in the center.
Neil, yeah, I think that's our.
All in favor of buying?
Fine. We don't really need a vote on it. That's funny because the one that everybody prefer hands down was the one on the right.
I know, but it's just too dark.
That tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
McSwain is the installer.
Yeah.
All right.
Does McSwain have any, uh, anything that dark?
Oh, it's fine. It, I mean, I think they gave us every sample that they've been able to come up with.
It's a harder topic getting the board.
Nothing from me.
Are you going to do public participation in case Mr. Ryan, your hat, that we wanted to add?
Um, I did go by Thompson Road. It's all cleaned up. Grass is there. It looks good. They cleaned it.
What's Thompson Road?
I'm Timmerman, I'm sorry. Thompson is up. Uh, do, uh, Denlab.
They've been, it had been cleaned up for a while.
It looks good, okay. Anything else from the board? Public participation? I don't have, I don't have anything from anybody.
Okay.
All right. And we go into executive session. Move for the adoption of motion number twenty-five dash zero seven zero to retire from exec, to executive session. To discuss the discipline of a public employee in accordance to a higher revise code section one, two, one, dash, two, two, G, one. Time of the.
Seven oh eight.
Seven oh eight. Need a second for the motion?
Second.
Discussion, full call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Keith, uh, trustee Blower? Trustee Young?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that. Oh.